Snap 7:30, and we'd like to get started. I would like to call to order tonight's Old Bridge, New Jersey Planning Board meeting for tonight, May 26, 2022. And if we could all stand and salute the flag, please. Pledge of Allegiance, do the flag, United States of America, to the Republic which stands, the nation, the God, indivisible, in liberty, justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Planning Board has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of the meeting by one prominently posting in the municipal complex, announcement giving the date, time, location, and agenda of this meeting, two mailing such announcements to the home news Tribune, and three filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk. Chairman Marucci?
Here.
I know Ms. Cannon is absent tonight. Mr. Lanning?
Here.
Mr. Mimakis?
Here.
Mr. De Palma?
Here.
Mr. Lauer?
Here.
Mr. Rena?
Here.
Mr. Pink?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Ms. Musella?
Here.
Mr. Sordillo?
Here.
Ms. Shapiro?
Here.
And myself, Ms. C. Thank you.
Okay, to begin the agenda. Today, we're starting with two resolutions. I'm sorry, the meeting minutes. I skipped over. We'll start with the meeting minutes for April 28, 2022. And do I have a motion for that?
I'll move it.
Mr. De Palma?
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second. Doesn't matter.
Mr. Petty?
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes. Okay, now we move on to the resolutions, and we have two this evening. First one is 14-2018P, Son Brothers LLC amended major preliminary and final site plan. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
By Mr. Mimakis. And a second?
A second.
By Mr. De Palma.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
No.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes. And the second resolution is 23-2019P, Vista at Old Bridge Extension of Time. Motion?
I'll move it.
By Mr. Lanning.
A second.
By Mr. Mimakis.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes. And we'll now move on to a completeness waiver, and that is 25-2022P Chick-fil-A. And it's an amended major preliminary and final site plan with C variances. Hello, sir?
Stephen, Chairman of the Board, I'm Stephen H. Merman of Council of Javabound, Wergiaf, Hicks, Khan, Wickstrom, and Sinis, appearing on behalf of the applicant. We have received a copy of the memorandum concerning our waiver requests, and basically we are asking for a waiver of four specific items, and the memorandums indicate that it would be appropriate for those items. Wait, I really don't have anything else to add to the situation.
Pretty simple. Have we had a chance to? Nicole?
Yeah, Ms. Savant had reviewed the application for the waiver request. She had agreed with the applicant that the waivers requested can be granted. Just know that when the application did come in, we have all this information. So really, the waiver is just not to update it, which there would be no change anyway.
Okay.
So we do agree to the waiver request.
Okay. Pretty simple. Okay, any other comments or questions from the board professionals? Okay, any questions or comments from the board members? I wish they were all like this.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Was the site plan and actual elevations provided as part of this application? Because the only document we received was the professional memo.
Right. There was, in fact, a full site plan that has been submitted. In fact, I delivered this evening another set of plans in response to questions and comments that have been received from your staff.
This is one question. The second question that I have, and it may be for the professional planners of what's on record, the resolution for the approval of this application, was that reviewed and cross-referenced relative to this application that you have in front of us?
Yes, I could answer that. I mean, just to go back to your first question, just know that the information that's provided by the applicant isn't distributed at this point because this is only a waiver hearing when the applicant is front of the board again, and the technical memorandums issued by Ms. Savant and myself get issued to the board. That's when all that documentation comes forward for the technical review portion. This is only just to review the waivers that are being requested in relation to the checklist for submission of the application. The second question that you asked, I'm so sorry, what was it?
It was relative to the resolution for the...
Yes, I mean, of course, we reviewed the resolution. I mean, we were here, I was here, not Mrs. Savant, but I was here when the original application had come in, and we see the need for the canopies that they're requesting. And so the application itself is for an amendment on the original plans to include two canopies for their drive-through. You might see their workers out there.
All right, well, out of curiosity, the reason why I'm asking the question is on prior resolutions, there was a requirement to submit a post-traffic study. Now, I haven't read the resolution to see if that requirement was there, or if a post-construction traffic study was conducted.
Again, this is a technical, that is a technical review comment. Those comments don't come forward now during a waiver request hearing.
Right. And the reason why I ask is I wouldn't consider waiving a traffic impact study if there was a requirement to provide one post-construction.
Just know that there is a caveat in any of our memorandums that state that during the review of the application during the planning board hearings, right, we have the opportunity to request any information that comes to light. The applications only get forwarded to the engineering department for review after the application has been deemed complete. Without these waiver requests being gone through or approved by the board, one way or the other, they don't get to get to that hearing part. That's where the technical review.
Right.
We're really just going through a checklist and marking off what has been satisfied.
Thank you.
And I assure you, Mr. Rena, that if staff asks for additional documentation throughout the process, it will be provided.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? No questions? Okay. With that, I will, you know, to go through the typical summary and all, it's pretty simple.
At this point, if there's no further questions, we just have to make the motion to grant the waivers.
Okay. Okay. We'll make a...
I'll move it.
By Mr. Mimakis?
I'll second.
By Mr. Lanning.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
No.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you in very near future with the full application.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, moving on to our first application is 46-2021P Aldercrest Development Corp., and it's a minor site plan.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
Professionals, staff. My name is Bob McGowan. I'm the attorney representing Aldercrest. We are here, as the chairman just mentioned, for a minor site plan approval. Normally, we would have gone to the Minor Site Plan Committee, but that was in flux at the last time, so we asked to be allowed to waive that procedure and to simply appear before the whole board. What we are applying for is, in addition to the existing office facilities that have been housing the Burnetty Organization and affiliates for as long as they think any of us can remember, except maybe Mr. Lauer, maybe he remembers when it wasn't there, I don't know. But the addition that we're looking for is about the size of these three sections. So that's a storage area that we want to add to the existing one-story building, and in addition to that, we want to add a two-car garage. With me this evening is the engineer, who has prepared the plans, and he is prepared to testify.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you please state your name and spell your last name?
David Eriksen, E-A-R-E-C-K-S-O-N.
Dave has appeared before the board many times, but he can recite his credentials if the board wishes.
Please, yes.
I have an engineering degree from NJIT in civil engineering. I've been a PE for over 20 years. I've testified at dozens and dozens of planning boards across the state, projects ranging from small additions like this to thousand-unit subdivisions, from small retail stores to a 3 million-square-foot retail complex.
Okay, thank you. Very good, thanks.
Unless there's any, you know, cleanup there, things or anything, we, you know, we didn't need to give notice. We have obviously a complete application.
Absolutely, yes. This is a minor site plan, so it didn't require a separate public notice for this hearing. It would have been heard before the subcommittee, but we don't have a subcommittee right now, and we're looking at that procedures in general. So we're going to be hearing this before the full board, and, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any other comments?
Sort his testimony.
Okay. Could we have the minor site plan up on the screen, please? And the second page, please? So for the board, this shows in shaded lines the existing parking lots and building that is the Aldercrest Office Building. The gray area on the right-hand side is the storage addition. The gray area on the left-hand side is the two-car garage that we're building. The only other site changes that we're making were putting new paving on top of the existing paving on the entire north parking lot, and on the southern parking lot, we're putting new paving on top of the existing on half of it, and then restriping and adding handicap stalls. There is a handicap, and then restriping and adding handicap stalls. There is a handicap ramp on the south side by the handicap stalls, and a new access from the handicap ramp into the back of the building where there is a handicap ramp into the building. Now, this building is setback from Route 9, and it's on 53 acres of property, is that correct? You can see, if you scroll down just a little bit in the lower left-hand corner, that's the property, and that's the building. So you can see how small the building is. It's nowhere close to any property lines except the one on Route 9, and it's set back quite a distance from Route 9. All right, perhaps the best thing to do is simply go through the review letter.
Sure.
And let Dave address that.
Sure, makes sense.
So we have a review letter originally issued February 16, 2022, and updated through April 26, 2022. The beginning simply identifies what has been submitted, and it gives a property description, which we have provided here this evening. It tells that, you know, the parking stalls are going to be redesigned. It tells us that this is in the Economic Development Opportunity Zone 3. The next page gives an outline of the minimum lot areas and so forth. All of this is factual information, none of which we disagree with, and there's no argument, nor do we have any arguments with the review letter at this point, quite frankly. If you go to paragraph H variance in waivers, there are no variances or waivers are required. If you go to planning and engineering comments, the proposed garage does not require any waivers or variances. If you go to 1C under planning and engineering, it indicates that amounts will be determined as far as performance bond inspection fees and maintenance guarantees after the plans have been finalized. However, since there's no public improvements or there are no bonds, we will, of course, post inspection fees, and that should be the extent of what's required for this development. There are comments here as to additional notes and revisions for clarification that should be made to the plans, and Dave, you agree that you'll make those revisions to the plans? Is that correct? Yes, and on A, the existing lighting will remain as is. It's sufficient and adequate, so we're just going to leave it alone. Okay. If you go, and then as you go through, you can also see that a number of comments that were addressed, for instance, 2C comment has been addressed, 2D comment has been addressed. And 2B, we will address those comments. Okay. 2E comment has been addressed. F, the comment's no longer applicable. G, addressed. H, addressed. I'm sorry, that's no longer applicable. I, no longer applicable. J, comment has been addressed. K, plan should be revised accordingly. We will. If David agrees to do that. L, comment has been addressed. M, and then there are subsections to that. A, the sub-A is comment addressed. B, pavement repair script details should be revised. We're going to do that. We will. The Belgium and granite block curb, you want to address that, Dave? We're not proposing any new Belgium curb, so the only curb detail that will be there is concrete. D is inlet casting that's no longer applicable. E, a comment addressed. F, comment addressed. G, comment addressed. H, concrete sidewalk, walkway, comment still applies. We will add a detail for that. We are proposing concrete sidewalks. Handicap parking stall in aisle, comment addressed. J, no longer applicable. K, concrete curb. We will add that detail. Okay. N, the applicant should indicate the status of outside approvals. There are no outside approvals. The only outside approval originally was freehold soils, and because of the change in approach, that is no longer...
in approach, that is no longer needed.
O, plans will be revised. P, applicant should consider installing a new catch basin and running pipe underground.
So when we resurface this parking lot, the top of the paving is going to be about an inch below the top of the curb. We don't feel the need for any, it's going to just run over into the same area that it used to go through that six-inch pipe, so we don't feel the need to put an inlet in.
Q, plan should be revised to indicate the FFD at the front and of the building and rear of the building.
Both architectural and engineering plans will be revised in accordance with this comment.
Parking A, applicant should provide testimony regarding the intended use of the two-car garage.
Company cars. The owner of this building travels extensively, so he's going to keep company cars in the garage.
He travels back and forth primarily between Florida and here, is that correct?
That's correct.
They have a large operation. I'm sure you must all know that they have a large operation in Florida. Parking B, there's a question about the parking stalls and the sizes.
So in the original application, we made all the stalls equal sizes, but they were slightly under 10 feet. One of the initial comments was that they were required to be 10 feet, so we striped them out 10 feet, and the large stall at the end was just a remainder. So we're not intending to store anything larger, it's just that's how it ended up.
Okay. The next one.
Dave, can you just stripe that remaining piece so that they're, like, at least uniformed with the space before it, so that, like, two people don't try and, like, or, there's, like, not a...
You mean, like, a hatched area or something?
Like a hatched area.
Sure. We'll add that to the plan.
Sure. We could do that. 4B, this actually goes on the next page. Testimony should be provided. You're not, we're not proposing any new lighting.
No new lighting.
Right. And then landscaping.
You have a letter from Gary Lovallo. You actually met with our client on site. They agreed to trim all of the existing trees and then add one new tree, and that was sufficient to Mr. Lovallo, so that's what we will do.
So no tree removal, just the trimming of existing?
Just trimming of them.
And one new tree that will be added, which is a significant tree.
One new tree, the similar size of those are big trees, so we're going to add one tree that's a similar size to those.
Okay. And we would ask that it be entered into the record as a letter to the Board. We've seen a copy of it. We accept it. Maybe the one from... That's the extent of the letter. If there are any questions, obviously, from the Board or any comments from staff, I appreciate them.
Mr. Chairman, we agree with everything that the applicant's engineer and attorney have addressed tonight, and we have no exceptions to that.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Any Board members have any questions?
I have my question.
Mr. Lauer.
The garage, will that have an upstairs access on top of that garage?
It does have a peaked roof, but there won't be living area there. There may be a pull-down stairs for access to get up in there. There's...
Possibly storage, too, right?
Probably.
Okay. And sewer, do you have all the utilities? Do you have water, city water and city sewer?
Existing.
All of that's available and existing and it's been operating. We're not adding any functioning part to this other...
You're so far out there, I wasn't sure of the situation.
It's on public sewer and public water.
Is the garage going to be conditioned in any way? Heated or cooled or?
Just...
Just a garage?
Electric. Just lights. Yep.
Okay. Mr. Lauer, anything else? No? Anybody else?
Question about the office space, 533 feet, about what...
Just turn your microphone off, please.
Hi. Sorry about that. The expansion to the office space, 533 square feet, about what, what's the magnitude of that expansion? About what percent does that represent of the whole, of the existing structure?
And it's just for storage. It's not an increase in use by any people. I'd say probably 10%.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll open it up to public questions. Anybody in the public? Okay. Nobody is standing on the orange X. All right. We'll close the public portion at this time. Okay. That's it. The final comments from our professionals, Board members.
Is there any other witnesses or?
Nothing else, and no other questions.
Okay. Pretty simple.
Chairman, just make sure there's no one from the public that has any comments to make, or is it?
I don't see anybody.
Yeah. Just want to make sure it's, the record's clear.
Yep. Okay. Do we need a summary or?
Yeah. I mean, I can do a real quick summary. Is that this is a straightforward minor sub-site plan application, as was testified to. There is no waivers, there is no, there is no, excuse me, variances required. Thank you. And there, aside from compliance with the Board's professionals' reports, which, you know, as subject to the testimony provided, there's no other conditions attached to this approval if the Board so chooses.
Okay. Very good. Okay. And no final public comments, as I see. So I'll move it to a vote.
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Mimakis, and second by Mr. Renna.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Renna?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Marucci?
Yes.
Members of the Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, our next and final application on the agenda for this evening is 88-2021P Richard DeVivo, and it is a minor subdivision with C variances. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, members of the Board, professional staff. Lawrence Sacks. I'm not Brian Whiteman. I'm covering this meeting for him this evening. He filed the application, but I'll be presenting it this evening. I represent Richard DeVivo. This is property located at 189 Tyse Town Road. It's block 14263, and it's Lot 10. And we're before you this evening for a minor subdivision to create two residential lots. One of the lots will have an existing home where my client lives now. The new lot to be created, which is proposed Lot 10.12, is a home that my client would like to live in. So we will provide testimony from our engineer, Mr. Anthony Maltese, who will describe the subdivision. We do need some bulk variances. We'll get into that. One of them is for minimum front yard setback. One is for a shed, an existing shed that's already in the, in the front yard area because this is a corner lot. And lastly, a non-critical area coverage variance, which we will provide testimony as to. So, Mr. Chairman, if I can have my witness sworn in, it would be Mr. Anthony Maltese.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell the last name for the record.
Anthony Maltese. M-A-L-T-E-S-E.
Thank you.
Maltese, if the Board, the benefit of professional background and education.
Sure. I'm here tonight filling in for JKR. My name's Anthony Maltese. I'm a professional engineer in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and also a professional land surveyor, professional planner, in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Florida. I've appeared in front of Boards for, dozens of Boards for commercial sites, residential. I'm the Board Engineer in Freehold, I'm the Board Engineer in Pemberton Borough.
Accepted.
And just to clarify, will you be providing testimony as the engineer and the planner in support of the variances?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And he's licensed in both. And your licenses are in good standing, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, Mr. Maltese, if you can describe the existing conditions and then the proposed subdivision, and I think we have the map that was prepared up on the screen.
Yes.
We mark that as Exhibit A, I would assume.
The property is located at the intersection of Tyse Town Road and Cottrell Road. It's block 142. The existing lot size is currently 2.65 acres. It's a single-family dwelling. The residential, directly across the street is all residential on Tyse Town and also Cottrell Road. Adjacent to the property is Lot 9.11, which is also residential. Adjacent to, to the north is a church, which is Lot 9.12. The current property, I'm running through the, almost the middle of the property. The drainage flows from the east to the west and pretty much drains to the stream itself. So, going through the report, there's a few variances here that we're requesting. Lot size is not an issue on this. We are maintaining the 42,000, almost 43,000 square feet, so we hit the minimum lot area that, along Tyse Town Road, for the existing dwelling. Where 50 feet is a minimum requirement, we're currently at 49 feet. Once it's subdivided, the building will still be in non-conformance. The proposed dwelling for Lot 10.12 does not require any setbacks in variance. It does require a minimum non-critical variance. The requirement is 65%. This property is requiring 44.27%. The existing property without the subdivision is undersized and is in variance for non-critical. It's, it's currently 57.84% because there's a stream and also the wetlands with the buffer. The intention of JKR Engineering and the applicant was to put the new lot into conformance, a non-critical condition, creating 65.87, and the remaining lot, the proposed lot 10.12 will require the variance on that. The other variance is a shed located in the front yard where accessory structures are not allowed, and the applicant plans to keep it there if he can.
Is the shed on the lot or the existing lot?
The existing lot.
It's on the existing?
Yes, sir.
The existing home.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
There are no accessory structures proposed at this time on the new lot. In, one of the comments in the letter was asking if there was a basement to be proposed. There is no basement proposed for this house.
And is the existing house on the slab as well, or is that a basement?
Existing...
It's a basement.
It's a basement.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Maltese, let's, let's go to the variance for the non-critical area, and I think you've indicated that right now the property is not in conformity with respect to that ordinance requirement. With this subdivision, Lot 10.11 will become in conformity. Lot 1012 will require a variance. Let's focus a little bit on Lot 1012. If you can give the Board the flavor of how large this lot is, what area is usable, and maybe also talk about some of the other lots that are in the adjacent residential neighborhood.
The 10.12 lot is a single-family dwelling. It has a... There's a wetland line going through the property on the southerly side with a 50-foot buffer coming from that wetland line. There was an LOI completed and approved. If this property, this property is subject to approval, and if it is approved, they will need to do a buffer transition, buffer averaging on this to make this project work. Currently, with this design, there is a total of 18,977 square feet of non-critical area. The backyard alone has almost 9,700 square feet of usable area, which is plenty of room. The properties directly across the street are, their lot sizes are 20,000 square feet. So this, this property fits in with the surrounding area, and we feel that it's very usable, and there's plenty of room for what they're proposing. There was a comment of potentially moving the driveway or mirroring the current proposal. However, that, that may create some, a side yard variance or a rear yard variance if we did that.
All right. So in terms of the non-critical area for Lot 1012, I guess to summarize your testimony, we have about a half an acre, almost half an acre of usable area.
Yes.
And you have probably a quarter acre of a backyard area that could be used as the rear yard. Okay. All right. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to maybe go through the report. I think we're going to pretty much comply with everything, but let me just see if there's anything that we didn't cover. Mr. Maltese, I think you've indicated that there is a letter of interpretation. We will certainly provide that as a condition of approval. Let's see what else. I think we've indicated there's not going to be a basement here. That was one of the comments from your staff. I think we covered the issue of flipping the driveway, which actually would put us too close to that stream.
Mr. Steph, which number are you on?
Nicole, I think I'm on D. 1D.
Page 5.
Page 5. 1D. 1D?
1D. Okay. All right. So going to the minor subdivision plan comments, I can tell you that we will file it by deed. All right, we will not file it by map.
It's also noted on the plan as number 11.
Okay. And with respect to comments A, 1, 2, and 3, we'll certainly comply with that. Nicole, I'm not sure if we have to set new corner markers under the Act.
It does. I mean, we go verbatim from the Act.
Okay.
So it says, if you're a minor, you just have to put it in the shared, in the shared lot line.
Okay. That's fine. That's fine. That we can comply with. Let's see. 2B is acceptable. C is acceptable. D is acceptable. E is acceptable. All right. F and G, I think we've indicated there will not be any basements, so I don't think those are really not, not applicable. H is acceptable. I is acceptable. J, we'll provide that letter of interpretation, and of course, if we have to go back to, we have, we'll have to go back to the DEP for the buffer averaging, you know, certainly we'll, we'll obtain that. K is acceptable. We'll add those notes on the plan. L is acceptable. M is acceptable. Miscellaneous, paragraph 3 on page 7, we understand that if we want to do, if an expansion is ever contemplated on that Lot 10 point, I know you said 10.01, I think our plans say 10.12, but 10.02, we understand, would require relief from your zoning board if we did any expansions because we'd exceed the FAR. That's, that's not a problem. And in terms of the outside agency approvals in paragraph B, Freehold Soil, certainly when we apply for, for construction permits, we will certainly obtain their approval. Same thing with the OB, MUA. Middlesex County Planning Department, I'm assuming we'll get a letter of no interest on that. Although Tyse Town, Tyse Town a county road? I don't know.
No, no, no. It's township.
Okay. Mr. Lauer would know. Local, local street. So enough to worry about that. Certainly, any DEP approvals, we'll comply with. And that's really our presentation for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing. Yeah, we do have two other reports. We have a report from Mr. Lovallo, and, yes, in fact, I think we have no, no problem with complying with any marking of any trees, and I don't think the Shade Tree Commission[1759.69] has any issues with this as well. And then finally, there's a report from your Bureau of Fire Prevention, and they found no, no issues with this application.
Excellent, thank you. Nicole, anything?
I just want to start off in the beginning. Vina's not with us tonight, and so I'm going to put on the planner's hat for a second. When she brings up the non-critical area, when we're looking at a site, it's actually bifurcated by this stream. When NJDEP looks at a stream, they look to see if it drains greater than 50 acres. So I think the applicant's going to provide me calculations to see if the point of analysis at the culver that crosses under Cottrell Road, what contributory drainage area is associated with that. That's number one. Number two, if you look at the rear of the house, right, so the house currently, right now, is in transition area. That's transition area that's associated with the freshwater wetlands that were delineated on site. So the request was, the applicant did go in for a letter of interpretation so he could make sure that NJDEP agrees with the line that was drawn on the plan. And then they come back and they say, what is that buffer associated? Technically, it doesn't, it's, it could be fine, it could not be wet, but the the house is on or within the transition area. So what Vina was suggesting is, well, if you flipped it, you know, maybe the board would look favorably on a rear yard setback because of the irregular shaped rear lot, and have have you hold a 20-foot offset onto that northerly property line, and flip the house so the driveway is in that transition area. The application to NJDEP is for an averaging plan. So what they do is, they take away some of the transition area, and then they give it in the rear, and that's why you see that differential in that crosshatching. Now, one of the, one of the comments that the applicant's engineer, but I'm going to call him the planner when he made this comment, is the property is twice the size of the property across the street, but technically, I draw a line down where I see that transition area, and I say, well, this is what the property looks like. If I look at the across the street and I look at those rear yards, I see them as twice the size of this rear yard. And the, it's, it's sort of at an angled rear yard, like the property line at the back is angled. So, so in my report, I say, and this is what I typically do for this kind of an application, is I want you to put either a split rail fence or something to delineate the transition area, because on day one, people tend to come in and plow through and take all the trees down and get the pool guy out to give him an estimate on the pools and stuff like that. They don't realize the importance of, hey, you have to protect this area and almost let it naturally grow. So it, this is a tough one, because I think the flip would be a lot better than how it is, and, and really, it's for the future of the homeowner. Because if there's any issues, right, with the foundation or with something, you know, even though we don't deal in private matters in the engineering department, they call us to say, what can we do? You know, and then it's, it's too late at that point. So I don't know if the board will look favorably on flipping the house, I don't know if that's, you know, but, but to me, and maybe because I know too much, I don't know if if this would, you know, would be a good, you know, direction.
Nicole, it's a great comment, and I just spoke to our engineer and the client. We can flip it. I mean, obviously, it's going to trigger a small variance. Is it a side yard? I guess it's...
It's a rear yard, because if you hold the 20, he's now, he's now closer to that, that rear lot line.
Right.
Because it's on that angle, and so you have to draw the line perpendicular to that, to the rear lot line.
Yeah, so we can flip it, and I think the justification for it, and I can ask this, I'm not a planner, I'm just an attorney, but I'll ask Mr. Maltese. Obviously, the existing house on Tyse Town Road is a good deal of distance from where this driveway is going to be if we flip it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct? Okay, all right, thank you.
And we thought also, there's a church next door, and we thought also, like, you know, now we're moving him closer to, like, you know, something that gets a lot of traffic, right? So, but there's a buffer on that side, and that's a vegetated front area that the church is set a little bit farther back. When I had made the comment about the LOI, it's really to get the plan from NJDEP. They stamp the, the plan that you submitted with the delineation on there with that NJDEP with this, I want a copy of that. Let me see, so it's good to hear that there's no basement. I mean, not good for the person that's going to live in it, but good to hear for, for water table purposes. And then, in the minor subdivision, we like to still have a plan submitted to us that conforms, as if you're filing the map, even though you're going to file by deed, because for us, we update our tax backs using that, we send that out to our surveyor to get that information updated, and we use that in our GIS. So that's why we, that's very critical to us. Everything else, you know, I heard will comply unless it had no bearing now because there's no sidewalk. I know that you understand that if you increase your FAR, if there's an expansion or something, that it would trigger something. I just want the attorney to note that the bulk table in the beginning, the FAR that I calculated was under what the, what the engineer had calculated, but I think he was just rounding up with the square footprint, square footage footprint of the building. Other than that, I had no other comments on it. I'm glad to hear that we're receptive to flipping it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may just ask, Nicole, with regard to the rear yard variance, do we know what that variance would be at this point?
No, we wouldn't. But so I would, I, you know, let me see, let me...
We're trying to calculate.
He's going to do it, because I don't have a scale, so I see...
We can, we can do it as a plus or minus, but we, I think we at least have...
Yeah, 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 we need to have an understanding. Well, so what the minimum rear yard is supposed to be is 75. What he has currently now is 75.5. What I'm asking him to do is hold the minimum side yard setback of 20 feet, and then he's going to draw that box that represents the 2240 square feet, and then he's going to take it from that corner, draw it as perpendicular as he can to that rear lot line, and come up with a number. I'm just filling dead air time right now.
No pressure here, no pressure. And while we're, while we're waiting, just to clarify, and for the record, you referred to flipping the house, it's actually mirroring the house and flipping construction.
Yes.
So the garage is on the other side.
Vina used the better word. Let me, let me put my...
Flipping is the word, I mean...
Let me make her proud as a planner. Oh, no, she said flip. Oh, yes, I said mirror, she said flip.
That is the technical term, it's a, you know, flipping the house, or mirroring.
Yeah, so the driveway would be laying on that transition area that they're taking away, and then the home would be closer to the upland area on, like, closer to the adjacent property.
So holding the corner of the front yard setback and the 20-foot setback at the worst case, and bringing that to the rear, it's 65 feet, so we would request 60, 63 feet as the variance.
And that's where 75 is required? 75 is required, okay.
So it's about 63 feet?
I got 65.
Okay. 65.
Play it safe.
Okay, 63.
Okay, now that we're doing this, are we still voting on it, voting with contingencies?
So he put a two-foot fluff in that, so he put 63, although he feels confident in 65. So when he comes back, if the revised plan show, let's say, 64, he's good, because he asked for 63.
Yeah, and it's just a minor, so, yeah. Okay. Very good. Okay, anything else, Nicole?
No, that's it.
I'll open up the questions from the board members. Mr. DePalma?
So I have a question in regards to the stream that's going through, and this is just from experience from family that just had a home bought by Blue Acres because of flooding. Is there any concern that, that this area gets flooded? Because I do know with, with heavy rains, I've seen water on the property, but is there concern of any major, any major stream overage?
According to Mr. DeVivo, he hasn't had any flooding problems there.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess the stream is probably deep enough to accommodate, you know, whatever's over there, so.
Okay, all right. Hey, I just, just want to make sure from, from seeing what happened to my family member four, four times in three years, so the bottom floor of his house was flooded out, so I just want to make sure that, you know, when you put the structure in, that we don't get a heavy rainstorm for whatever reason, and then it washes it out. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DePalma.
We're not changing the stream, though, right? The stream is going to be the way it is.
Okay, any, any questions or comments from anybody else?
Your contour, existing contour shows that it's 87 going through the house now. You're going to have a first floor elevation of 92.80 feet, so you're going, you're going to be filling in somewhere around five feet of fill. Am I correct on that?
The house will have a crawl space at three feet.
Oh.
So that'll be exposed foundation around the, the structure.
Okay, that, that was my second question, was it going to be a slab? Crawl space, crawl space.
Right, crawl space.
Any mechanicals?
And the other question, that, that fence, tree protection fence, will that be a permanent, once the house is finished, will that stay there forever?
I believe the intent there was a tree protection for, for construction such as self-fence for soil erosion.
Okay, so once the house is built, it's gone?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any mechanicals in the crawl space?
I have not seen the architectials, but I don't believe so, yeah.
Unless, no, three feet, we couldn't access anything, so. So any, you know, any furnaces would have to be on the first floor, compressors outside, yeah, or in the attic, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, once this is, because this is for the subdivision, once this, should the board act favorably on it, the applicant would then have to come to the engineering department, actually, the building department, to submit their building permits. The first stop on that is a plot plan review by the engineering department to review, really, the details associated. So this is like, on a subdivision plan, it's really us giving a first glimpse of it, but it's not the final.
It's just a minor, yeah. Yeah, understood. All right, if there's no other questions from the board professionals or members, we'll open it up to the public for comments and questions. Mr. Chairman, I think we can note that even for public comment later, there is no member of the public here, so. So I'm not going to get into my little mental block. Okay, and so do we need a brief overview? I think we pretty much understand.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've indicated what the conditions are that we'll comply with. I think we're complying really with all the technical recommendations. Obviously, we're, we're seeking now an additional variance for the rear yard setback, which will be 63 feet, where 75 is required. The notice that Mr. Whiteman provided talks about any other relief that might arise during the course of the hearing, so I think we're covered with that. And certainly, I think we would like the board to act favorably on this. Thank you.
As, as the applicant's attorney just summarized, there's now four variances being requested, so a vote for approval of this grant the minor subdivision for creation of the two lots, as well as the four variances that were requested. I agree with the attorney's summation that the notice is still proper and valid. As for conditions of approval, the applicant does agree to comply with the reports that were submitted by the board's professionals, subject to the testimony provided, provided at the hearing, as well as agreeing to flip the design and location of the new home, residential dwelling, which is what triggers the need for the fourth variance. So that's all I have for conditions, aside from also providing a copy of, excuse me, the LOI, and actually also providing, even though they're perfecting it by deed, they will provide a final map to the engineering department as well.
Okay. You know, I have to do this. Do we have any final questions or comments from the public? Okay, I'll close the public portion of this meeting. It's an inside joke. Okay, so I'll move to a vote. Do I have a motion? By Mr. Pink, and a second?
I'll second.
By Mr. DePalma.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairman Murji?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have a nice, quiet, quick week, quick evening, so.
Yeah, nice, nice.
Thank you very much.
I wish they were all like this. Okay, and before I adjourn the meeting, I just have to again ask if there's any public comments or questions.
Right, and it doesn't appear like there's anybody, Mr. Chairman.
We'll close that portion, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
By Mr. Lenning, and a second by Mr. Pink. Thank you all.